I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now, next we need a motion to approve the minutes for the February first, two thousand twenty-three council meeting?
I'll make the motion.
All right?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Same night, roll call, please.
Walden?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
All right, up next, we need a motion to approve the payment of the bills as they appear on the warrant sheets.
Make the motion.
Sorry.
Thank you, guys. Any discussion? Same night, roll call, please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
All righty, public comments on agenda items. We are gonna have some people talk at the end, because there's some things that's not on the agenda that they'd like to talk about, so we're gonna let them do that. If not, then we'll go to communications from the mayor. First off, I do want to remind everybody, April the fourth is an election day. So if we're here in the community, we have one contested race, so definitely, please get out and vote. Also, I do want to say, on Monday, Representative Brad Howbrook and Senator Steve McClure held a town hall meeting. Myself and Bruce Berry, the mayor of Taylorville, went, and also Chief Baker was also there, too. And we kind of talked about some things dealing with IDOT. And so the senator actually was going to be having a meeting yesterday to kind of talk about some things with IDOT. Hopefully, he can get some more information, considering with the J turn. We've also kind of talked about some things in regards to the possibility of a daycare coming in with Kimmer. I'm working on getting a grant through the state for that. So it was very productive, and got to learn about some other things dealing with law enforcement, different losses coming up there. So it was a great, great productive town hall, I should say. Really, that's really about it. There is one thing I do want to bring to everybody's attention. There is a sewer pump that we had to get replaced over at GSI, dealing with basically lifting everything to the lift station. We've got the pump down at Vandelia. There is a possibility that it will be over our threshold, so it's gonna be an emergency to repair, because it's something we have to do. But we're gonna let everybody know, like, how much it is, once we do find out. I talked to Jack today. We don't know anything yet on the cost. It might be one of those that it's pretty cheap, they're just gonna rebuild the inside of it compared to buying a new pump, so. Wanted you all to be aware of that. That's all that I got. So turn it over to Stephen.
Okay.
He's got quite a bit.
Well, I'll try to run through it quickly. I was asked to look into starting the process of dealing with the abandoned house at three twenty-six North Poplar. Most of that started back in two thousand twenty-one, I believe, and then got to a point where it just kind of fell. So I had to figure out what had been done and what hadn't, and I will work with Janet to get the current notices up to date. And we also have to do a property search to make sure there's no liens on the property. And then I'll move forward with giving a demolition notice or whatever it is, but seems the best way to proceed.
You got something you want to add?
Can we, can you give, like, advice on, at what point or what stage can the city clean up the junk in the front yard?
Probably, we can give them a notice, and if they don't take care of it within two weeks, city can do it and then add the cost of that to the liens and everything.
We just weren't sure really where it fell in the...
Yeah, and I, to be honest, this was a new property to me, too, so I'm not even sure what the status is. But if, you know, we could get a current update on what it is and some pictures would help, too.
Okay.
So, okay?
Cool.
The Hindemann Property, three fifteen North St. John, is ready to be closed. We've got the deed for the mayor, so all they have to do is come in and exchange.
That's, we sold at the auction, at the build.
Couple months ago, yeah. The seven twelve East Illinois, the Wellington Property. I spoke with Mandy today. They are expecting to be moving back into Assumption, probably not until the end of May. And so they have requested to have until early October to actually demolish the house. So if that's okay with it, I'll write that contract up, we'll get it to them, and we'll get that transferred and get that process underway.
And it'll probably be before October. I know, but I last spoke to him.
Yeah, except today, he was worried because they're moving so much from San Diego, and he was just worried that he wouldn't have time if we put it too soon, so. So did the back taxes get straightened out on that?
That I told him, I'm personally pretty sure that the back taxes are taken care of through judicial decree. But I also told her that she'd have to retain a lawyer to get that opinion herself, so.
Okay, so, I mean, because that was kind of contingent on the whole, the whole sale and the whole process, was that the state was basically gonna waive, was gonna waive the back taxes and clear that title?
See, and the only part of that I know about is that there were back taxes. She was asking whether those would be waived. I know we have a judicial decree, which is close to take care of those. Whether there's been any other contact between her and anyone else about those, I don't know. I'm not even sure who purchased the taxes. Yeah. Okay, let's see, the nitrate enforcement action from the EPA. I've been in contact with the Attorney General's office. I do have the check now just to pay the penalty on that. It is overdue. They may want to pay, the city to pay some interest on that, but I've talked to the Assistant AG, and hopefully, they will decide that's not worth bothering with. And then I will work with the engineers to figure out whether that consent order needs to be modified. And I'll be, both the Assistant AG and I are hopeful that it doesn't, but if it does, we'll be back next meeting with a modified consent order for approval. And land for the purchasing of water plant again, that's something that was kind of started and then put to rest, and I've kind of resurrected. So I've got most of the paperwork, I think, caught up. We'll need to get some things updated, like the title work. But once that's all done, we've got a draft, a contract, and should be able to move forward pretty quickly, so. What's his name? Shahadeh. The hearing that had been scheduled a week or two ago was canceled because the judge was sick, so it's been rescheduled for March fourteenth, and that's on a motion to dismiss his void of claim. I think that's about it. Any other questions?
No. All right, communications from the treasurer. Got anything?
All right.
Communication from all the persons?
What was the reason that we didn't get the EPA nitrate fine paid?
Well, so it's a little bit, so the state, it happened during the transition from a treasurer and mayor. And then also, the attorney general that was handling the case at the time left to go on eternity leave. And that person ended up quitting, not coming back. And so then a new assistant attorney general was then assigned to the case and just found it and brought it up. So it was really nothing on anybody's, it's kind of a...
So I hadn't heard anything about that, and then...
Yeah, it was like one of those, it's like, hey, we gotta pay. And it kind of goes back a little bit to the, to the water plant, you know, I was having a meeting with a group of Chastains. And I even re-listened to the executive session, so it was just like kind of one of those that we talked about, but then it was during a transition period. And, you know, there's some things I still wanted to get done, and then it just kind of, well, we just found out, we just haven't bought it yet. And it's like, hey, we need to be getting that rolling. So, and I've already talked to Mike Pizzi, he's perfectly fine with it. I mean, he's even fine to where if he goes ahead and he farms it, and then if there's something that needs to be done, like we got it, you know, we're ready to cut ground, he's fine with us tearing up the crops. I mean, he's okay with that, so he is totally on board with it and totally understands, so.
Thank you.
All right, city clerk, you got anything? All right, then we'll start rolling into the new business. First thing up is a motion to renew CD number sixteen, four, three, two, for a hundred and forty thousand dollars for a six-month term. That's the best available rate. Do we have a motion to approve that, please?
I'll make the motion.
Sorry.
Any discussion? Same night, roll call, please.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
All righty, up next, we're going to, we have Trey here from, he's the president of Simcom?
Simon.
Simon.
I have it written down, but anyway, he's our electric aggregate. He basically works for us, he's a broker, and so we're going to turn it over to him and talk about electric aggregation for a minute.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks for the invitation to be with you tonight. Mayor asked me to give you information about what happened just a couple of weeks ago with the electric aggregation program. Simon has had the privilege to work with the city since two thousand thirteen, when the voters of Assumption passed a referendum to adopt, well, actually, to allow the city council to establish an opt-out electric aggregation program. We worked with the city to set it up, and we've been with the city through three contracts, and we just signed an agreement for a fourth here a couple of weeks ago, which I wanted to get into a bit. You may recall that it was about a year ago that our firm recommended to the city that you suspend for one year the electric aggregation program. The reason for that was you had a contract that ended in June of two thousand twenty-two. We were in the market for six, seven, eight months before that, trying to find a price that would replace that expiring contract. But we couldn't find a price that was anywhere close to Amarin. At the time, I think Assumption was just under five cents per kilowatt hour by that contract with Home Field then, Home Field, a utility supplier out of Collinsville, Illinois. And prices at that time on the open market, where we expect competition and quality and all those things to settle below a regulated price, were actually about sixty percent higher. We were seeing prices of eight cents per kilowatt hour, and over the next twelve months, in the past twelve months between then and today, we saw prices as much as eighteen to twenty cents per kilowatt hour. So the call to return to Amarin for that one-year period, and we're required to stay with Amarin for one year if we're out for at least two months, so we were, we knew we wouldn't find a price, and so we recommended the one-year hiatus. We saw in the market in February an optimal time to get in for a number of reasons. One is that natural gas prices, which are really an exemplar for all energy commodities, coal, oil, other fuels, and so on. Natural gas prices, which on August fourteenth were just shy of ten dollars per MMBTU, which will be meaningless until I tell you, on the day we negotiated our contract, February ninth, they had reached a dollar ninety cents per MMBTU. They had fallen that far. And so with electricity typically, along with other fuels, tracking natural gas, that was a sign that told us it's an optimal time. Another piece is what's called capacity. There are three parts in an electric rate for supply. Capacity, which is the recovery of costs that's invested in power plants that produce electricity, the energy itself. And natural gas is, as I say, is an exemplar. And the third major piece is transmission, getting electrons from the power plant over the, over the area, from the power plant to the bulk substation in Assumption. So those are the three major pieces. Transmission is pretty firm now, it's a dollar fifty-six per megawatt day. Those are sort of meaningless terms that only people like me probably understand, I would guess, but anyway, that's a dollar fifty-six. The energy charge itself that we negotiated was eight cents per kilowatt hour, and the capacity rate, we estimated at three cents per kilowatt hour. So the result in the rate we got works up to eleven point three cents per kilowatt hour. Now, first thing to do is, how's that compare to Amarin? Amarin right now is at eleven point eight three three cents per kilowatt hour, or about five, five half a cent more than this rate. The other thing to keep in mind is that Amarin changes its, adjusts its rate every June. It also adjusts in December. Typically, the June increase is higher than the December increase. So we expect to see that the price, Amarin's price at eleven eight three three, will be going up in June. Our price, which starts with meter readings in July, will continue for twelve months and be fixed or capped for that twelve-month period, so there would be no increase. The other thing I would point out is that Amarin customers, and I'm currently on Amarin, as you all are right now, Amarin customers also pay what's called the purchase electricity adjustment. And the importance of that is that it gives us a sense that there's not enough capacity to serve our customers. There's not enough generation going on within the territory, that includes Assumption, to provide all the kilowatt hours we need. And that means that MISO, which is the independent system operator, I'll try not to get too confusing here, but they're buying power not only from utilities within our area, but they're having to buy all systems. So it means that in addition to that eleven point eight three three cents, which covers the cost of the system, you know, system generation, purchase electric adjustment is telling us they are also buying capacity off system like utilities in Kentucky, Indiana, and so on and so forth. And the result is, the purchase electric adjustment, which just went positive after seventy-two negative months, seven months ago went positive, and it's averaged about three and a half mils, or tenths of a cent, since that time. And if we add that to the eleven point eight three three, Amarin right now, Amarin customers are paying for their electric supply, about twelve point two cents per kilowatt hour. And it means we're almost a penny less than that, so we will see, we'll see savings immediately, and we should see more savings, more savings in June, when we see Amarin's adjustment period, or, yeah, Amarin's adjustment. So with that, I hope I hadn't confused you, but I would like to answer any questions you have with regard to the contract we just signed. Once again, it's with Home Field, it's for twelve months, and the effective rate is eleven point three cents. We will know the firm rate in May, when the capacity auction is held. It'll be around eleven point three cents per kilowatt hour. There is no good rate anymore. It seems to me we won't see single visitor rates for some time to come. Because in addition to all of that, the perfect storm also includes the fact Illinois has been closing coal-fired power plants. I worked for CIPS for more than two decades, entered early retirement, and the five coal-fired plants that I worked with, of those five, four have been closed. And I do know, I can tell you, that it takes roughly eight to ten years to build a new baseload unit. So that means we're gonna be kind of incapacitated for some time to come, and we can expect increasing electric rates. And that makes your electrical irrigation program attractive from that perspective. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll...
Yeah, do you guys have any questions? I don't know if you had anything to ask.
No, we've talked, we're in with basically everything.
Everything, yeah.
May I say one more question?
Uh huh, yeah.
I will be sending to you, to Janet, a news release and questions and answers and so on, in advance of the letter that Home Field by law is required to send every participant. This is an opt-out program. The council adopted an opt-out program, which means if I am a resident of Assumption, and I really don't want to participate in the program, I can make a phone call, and I'm out, and I'm back. And if I want to go to Amarin, I can do that. If I have a son who works for Liberty Power, I can go there. You know, the nice thing about competition is we can go anywhere now. But it's very difficult to understand, and I've seen a number of people run into trouble, because there are contracts for which we don't know how they work, and I might have a nice guarantee for a nice price for three months, and after that, I'm on the market, which may reach fourteen to twenty cents. And if you look at Illinois, plug in Illinois.org right now, it's upwards of twenty-five cents a kilowatt hour, which is crazy.
Will the opt-out, the opt-out letter, will it have the finite numbers?
Yes.
Because I'm assuming the majority of people, when they get the letter, that's all they're gonna look for, is what am I paying, and what will this be?
Yeah, the very first paragraph of the lead really contains all four matters that really should be talked about. That's the rate, the length of time, the term, and that you can opt out for any reason at no cost. You just make your phone call and say, I don't want to participate in Assumption's aggregation program, and they take you off the list.
That was the other thing. If I read correctly, there's no early penalty, like six, six months into it, if you want to opt out at that point?
No, you can, you can opt out the day, or the day before it ends, it's entirely, you know. The beauty of this is, the beauty of the program the council adopted is, being part of the program, people are allowed to choose everything. So people have the right to stay with the program, to opt out, to go with Amarin, or to go with another retail electric supplier. It's, everybody's in his own driver's seat.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. What I would say, there will be an eight-hundred number. This can get really confusing. You're welcome to provide whatever information, to, you know, answers to questions you may get, if you feel comfortable. What I recommend to you is refer your constituents to the eight-hundred number. Those people are trained to answer those questions. If they can answer the question, I want you always feel free to call me, as the mayor says. You're my boss, so I want you to feel free to call me, but I recommend that for your constituents, you have to call the eight-hundred number.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
You're welcome, thank you. All righty, up next, we have a motion to approve Assumption Fest. It'll be August seventeenth to nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and then also a thousand dollars for advertising. This is where we put in our city information into their book, so we have to approve both of that. So we'll just do it under one motion, approving the closures of Assumption, the road closures for some, that's a thousand dollars, right? All right, thanks, you guys. Any discussion? Same night, roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
All righty, up next, we have a motion to approve the audit engagement agreement with LMHN. Just need a motion to approve that, because it'll be starting on our year and stuff, really, May first.
I'll make that motion.
All right, thank you. You have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Same night, roll call, please.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Up next, a motion to approve the agreement for the Garwood lease for two thousand two hundred dollars. What this is, is that this is the ground that our wells are on off the Stonetown Blacktop. We approve this every year, so. So you'd like to be approved, please?
I'll make the motion.
All right, thank you. You have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Same night, roll call, please.
Walden?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Next, a motion to approve, this is actually for two trees, it's three oh one North Tech Green for eight hundred dollars. Both those trees will be done for eight hundred. There are two Bradford pears, and they have been split, uh, struck by lightning, but they are kind of a hazard, so they're gonna be taken down. So I see a motion to approve that, please?
I'll make the motion.
All right?
Second.
All right, thank you, Susie. Any discussion? Same night, roll call, please.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Steve.
Walden?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
All right, up next, we have a motion to approve the resolution for the MFT for forty-five thousand dollars. This is our MFT budget that runs the calendar year. Just need a motion to approve that.
Twenty twenty-three dash two is the resolution number?
Twenty twenty... I'll make the motion.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Same night, roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes, what da, two twenty-three dash what?
Twenty twenty-three dash two.
Okay, thanks.
Nelson?
Yes.
All righty, kind of up next, we've got a motion to approve the amendment to the handbook. So we're gonna kind of talk about a couple of things here. I know the attorney, I know during the police meeting and also in finance, we approved the language that was done. And then also, Susie brought up a great point, we need to also amend it with the residency requirements for the police officers, because we didn't do that, we did it on ordinance, but we also didn't do it in the handbook. So we need to actually change that as well. The attorney, I kind of mentioned some things you want to kind of discuss, I mean, what you were thinking? Are you happy with what I did?
Yeah, no, I think your estimations were fine.
Right, okay.
Yeah, the only, and I think you answered the question about the insurance.
Yes.
And the officer would be considered full-time as soon as he...
He is sworn in.
Sworn in, so, yeah, that was the only question I was like, I know. And where it fits into...
Fits into it under the job, uh, under the job description.
Okay, yeah, that was really the only question I had.
You guys have anything to... This is the language that we... So we also, you know, we will also add in there with the requirement to meet the residency requirement, too. Because I said, I didn't even, that was on Susie, and Susie brought that. That was really good, I didn't think of it. So that would match our ordinance that we passed, I think, back in October. All righty, you just need a motion, if there's no more discussion, you see a motion to approve the police handbook with the new amendment language.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Walden?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
All righty, and then up next, we got to, we kind of was talking about amending the handbook, we also kind of was talking about holidays. So I've also provided, one thing I've discussed about giving every, closing the city for federal holidays. Currently, there's some federal holidays we do not observe. President's Day is one of them, Martin Luther King is one of them. Juneteenth, I know is a new one, we do not, so. Just kind of wanted, we talked about different things. We also talked about Election Day at finance. That is, you know, we can do it during the presidential one, also during, the state does give it to you during the general as well. So it's just something to kind of think about. Are you happy with giving him all the holidays, as what the state gives? That would be something that would have to be amended to in the handbook as well. Just need a motion to, how should we do the, the motion to approve all holiday subject as to what the state gives?
Yeah, where is, this would be for all, not just...
This is for all, yeah, all employees, yeah, this is for everybody.
And do you have an existing ordinance or resolution that identifies the city's holidays?
Only in the handbook is what I've always, ever known.
Yeah, then I'd make a motion to...
Okay.
Does it, go ahead. Does it include, we had also talked about Christmas Eve and Hafte's and Christmas Eve.
We already have that in here, so we're basically, I mean, if we get down to it, we're adding Martin Luther King Day, President's Day, Juneteenth, and then the, uh, Election Day. Those are the ones that we're gonna be adding, because we already get, you know, all the others. Even Veterans Day, we do observe that. All right, just need a motion to approve the additional holidays, and I'll obviously say it for the record, Martin Luther King Day, President's Day, Juneteenth, Columbus Day, and General Election Day. You have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Same night, roll call, please.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith? Reed?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
All right, up next, we have a motion to approve jetting at GSI for twenty-five hundred dollars. So this is actually going to be paid out of the leftover COVID money that's in Jack's budget for water. There's fifty-three hundred dollars left, so we're gonna go ahead and use that to finish it. It's kind of just something that's kind of been needed over at GSI. So now that they've gotten their pond cleaned out, we're asking about this, so we agreed, so. Need a motion to approve that, please?
I'll make the motion. Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Same night, roll call, please.
Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Up next, a motion to approve the dispersment for Division A Nitrate for twenty-two thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars. Division A product invoice amount was for twenty-six thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars, please? All right, any discussion? Same night, roll call, please.
Walden?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Great, next, we have the motion to approve the dispersment for Division B two, the water main, for three thousand nine hundred eighty-one dollars and ninety-four cents. And Division B two, per invoice, for three thousand nine hundred eighty-one dollars and ninety-four cents?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? Same night, roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
All right, next, we have the motion to approve the dispersment for Division B one Lead Services for thirty-six thousand four hundred... Alright, next we have the motion to approve the dispersment for Division B one lead services for thirty-six thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty-one cents. Division B one verdict invoice amount for thirty-six thousand four hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty-one cents. You have a motion to approve that, please?
I'll make the motion.
Alright, thank you.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you. Any discussion? Same number, roll call please.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
Alrighty, then next we got a motion to approve the change order deduct for Division A Nitrate. And we're deducting forty-two thousand six hundred dollars.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Any discussion? Sign up, roll call please.
Reed.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Alright, up next we have a motion to extend the contract to February twelfth, twenty twenty-three, the nitrates running sixty-five days. Ron, do you want to discuss anything on this?
Um, this just extends the contract to encompass some of the work actually happened in January and the original contract had expired in early December. So it, once the contract expires, then the EPA kind of starts the clock ticking on repayment requirements and so on. So this lines it up better with how much time the, it wasn't actually the nitrate. It was some of the water main work that extended into January.
You see a motion to approve that, please?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Alright, next we have a motion to approve the change order deduct, Division B two, water main, and we're deducting eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifteen cents.
I'll make the motion. Second.
Any discussion? Sign up, roll call please.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
Alrighty, next we have the motion to extend the contract to February twelfth, twenty twenty-three, the water main, for adding sixty-five days. Anything you want to add to that, Ron?
It's the same sixty-five days. I think it had to do with a couple of lead services didn't get completed until January.
We have a motion to approve that?
I'll make the motion.
Alrighty.
I'll second.
Perfect, thank you. Any discussion? Sign up, roll call please.
Burgess.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
Next we have the motion to approve the change de, or change order deduct, Division B one lead services. And we're deducting forty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty-four dollars and forty-six.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. I'll second. Thank you. Any discussion? Same number, roll call please.
Walden.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Alrighty. Up next, we have the motion to extend the contract to February twelfth, twenty twenty-three, lead services. Kind of the same situation as what discussed before.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Alright. Any discussion? Sign up, roll call please.
Smith.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Alrighty, discussion and action is necessary on sanitary sewer system. Phase two project items is properly brought to the board. Ron, you're up.
Okay, so the televising on the sewer system, the televising of existing sewers was completed recently. We're also still working through the process of approving manhole construction submittals. The lift station structure is being fabricated. And I think this coming week, there's going to be some work on a couple manholes, on existing manholes along Leefland Avenue. Other than that, there's no real action necessary.
Thank you. Discussion and action is necessary on the water system improvements projects is properly brought to the board?
I don't have any update on that, other than all of the paperwork you just voted on is intended to help close out all the construction contracts for that work and begin the process of closing out the loan paperwork.
Alright. Discussion and action is necessary on the water system improvements phase two, the new water plant building?
So we've been communicating back and forth on the community project funding grant. All the paperwork has been submitted and is ready to be submitted in an online form. We are waiting on a categorical exclusion to be issued, or paperwork to be issued about the intent to issue a categorical exclusion. So we're working through that process.
And then a discussion and action is necessary on the lava shell project is properly brought to the board? Are you aware of the money that's left over, fifty-seven thousand dollars?
Uh, not really, no.
Okay. I got a letter, an email from Freddie. So we're trying to find some way to maybe try to spin that, but the parameters on spinning it is very small. So I think, you know, just to kind of let you know that that's there.
Okay.
On it.
I'll.
Freddie Schmitty was the one that had sent an email to Janet and I on it. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
Anything else you got to add on it?
Nope.
Alright. So up next we have public comments on non-agenda items. There is three people that have at least asked us to talk. So I'll let those three go and then we'll open it up to the others. So the first person will be Chief Baker from the Christian County Sheriff's Office.
Hello, everyone. Like Tom said, my name's Jim Baker. I'm the chief deputy here at the sheriff's office in Christian County. And the reason I showed up tonight, I wanted to go over a couple things that I've been working on as a project a little over a year ago. I took over as the chief deputy, replaced your current resident, Scott Woods. I've had the pleasure of working with him for well over twenty years. And when I took this role of administration, I just looked at ways that I could make some steps forward in improving the, basically a project that I'm working on with connecting with communities. My first goal in that was to come out, introduce myself, provide the mayor with my email address, cell phone, business card. So that way, if you guys in the future have questions or comments that you want to reach out to, you know, I handle the daily operations with the sheriff. He's always been available by phone, but a lot of the daily stuff is things that I handle. With that, I kind of have a soft spot for villages. I started my career well over twenty-five years ago as the, in Kincaid and worked my way up to the chief of police there and then eventually here. And I can remember those times where you didn't have that connection with, or the relationship with the sheriff's office. And I'm trying to build on that and bridge that gap, strengthening that relationship. Brian and I have worked really well together over the years, back when I was on the road. Yesterday, I kind of talked to him briefly about some of the steps I'm looking forward to moving forward in that. Offering things like the village, not only Brian, but in his absence at any time. Over the years, I've seen villages go through in the absence of a police department, whether that be medical. Currently, there's two villages that I'm dealing with that have military leave going on. And with those military leaves, just like you guys, they'll have a new guy come out, work the road, but then that person's left kind of in the wind to figure it out. And I want to provide that information to where they've got somebody to turn to for, you know, needs within the law enforcement career. Along with that, moving forward, I'd like to try and, I talked to Brian a little bit. I wrote down your dates for your summer fest. My plan moving forward, available options, to try and get one of the deputies here, pending no current calls, to be on site as much as he needs. There again, coming from a village that I used to work, the Kincaid picnic, I can remember it was a long four-day, three-day picnic. And sometimes guys like that need a break. And if we can be there in their absence or an illness or something in that effect, that's what I want to offer to be able to have that. Some of the other things that, that may arise is, through the years, I've seen your staffing or your levels in police departments change. And at the time that you find yourself in a pickle where you don't have that and proceed to, it might be something as simple as a village board meeting, having problems where you have a, you know, you'd like to have somebody there for call purposes, crowd control. I've seen it all over the years.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to provide that contact, that information, let you know, you know, that you've got that resource. And it doesn't have to be, this, this plan moving forward with the community connecting activity gives me the opportunity to provide things to bridge the gap for everything from moving forward with addiction to health centers, things of that nature. I've got several things, but this being, in this program, this is the first step to me. I don't know if anybody's ever done this. I just want to show up, kind of introduce myself, provide my contact information. And therefore, somebody goes to several meetings a month, I'll try and keep it short and sweet, but I'm also here for any questions or discussions that you may have. I've attended Edinburgh, I've got Morseville, Kincaid, stuff like that. I know Edinburgh had some questions last time. They're one of them, that their chief of police has been deployed in the military recently. And working through with not only the schools, the village board, stuff like that. So they had questions pertaining to, you know, what our procedure is. And like I told Brian yesterday, I wanted to give him the full spectrum of why I was here. And it's, there's, you know, we work absolutely well together and there's nothing more than that. But simply is, you know, I wanted to offer, in event, a lot of times we, we just take it for granted. But if we know that Brian is going to be on vacation and somebody's not available, like I said, we can provide those, that extra patrol, things like that here, if we know calendar-wise that those things are up. And I just, it's things that I can see that there's always improvement somewhere. This is my hope to try and make those improvements, so.
Is that so, Brian, you, you know, the sheriff's office that, that you know?
Yeah. So, and we've talked about some other things that we're going to start, him and I got it, it really turned out well yesterday with our conversation to start having some chief meetings and working together with different stuff like that. But then, like I said, we've had questions trying to figure out, you know, in his absence, how do we handle something as simple as a damage report, criminal damage? And then to making sure that we don't want the services that we provide to be slipped through the gap that if he's on vacation and we fax him a report and it sits there for seven days, well, there's a better way for that. And that's where if you guys, you know, if we can communicate together, that that's, that's what we can do. And just like that, more presence at your picnics, things of that nature. I've been, you know, providing schools with, you know, deputies to walk through there, events, stuff like that. So open to any questions, comments, anything like that?
How are you on your staffing? I mean, I know for a while you were down.
Yeah, we're like everybody else. It's, it goes back and forth. We, like you guys, we do have one in the academy. When he comes out, we'll be back up to full staff and it took a little bit to get there. But we, if we're high in staff in our full roster on the, on the road, we find ourselves struggling to get dispatchers. Where it takes nine, we've operated as close to five. I, when I took over a year ago, as you guys can imagine, I had my first budget with everything through the roof that was budgeted, not for that fuel, things of that nature. Same way, we had an understaffing of, it takes twelve. We operate twelve road deputies. We try and manage two to the road per shift, running three shifts. And we were down five out of the twelve. So you can imagine how tough that got with the guys that were being mandatory back all the time.